All right, I will call the August 23rd, 2020, 2021 watershed planning commission meeting to order. Do we have any comments on the meeting minutes or the changes to the agenda? Today? Um, I will mention, I was looking at the minutes and it does say that I called the meeting to order, but I did miss last month. So I don't know if we need to make that edit somewhere. Somebody else would have called the meeting to order.
Yeah, I thank you, Commissioner Weaver. I believe that was Commissioner Pint that actually called it to order. So we will definitely make that that correction.
Okay. If there are no other changes, could we have a motion to approve the agenda and the meeting minutes with the suggested change?
I'll make the motion to approve. This is Commissioner Phil.
And do we have a second?
Commissioner Beerling, I'll second that.
Thank you.
All do roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitts.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Beerly.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, that motion has passed. Then we can move on. Looks like there's no public comment for this meeting, so we can move into staff reports and Troy, you're up.
Yes, thank you Chair and Commissioners. Good afternoon. Apologies for not getting the report to you in time for the packet. I was out of the office last week and just didn't get to it. But we do have the report and Vanessa has it up in front of you. I'll go over a few of the highlights. Starting with the number of cost share and technical assistance requests we have, you can see for the month of August where we dropped slightly below the 200 mark. So you can kind of see that over the last nine months or so, we remained around that 200 plus line. We had a big flush the year previous when the pandemic hit. We actually see a pretty steady increase and now that is coming back down to more of a normal level, I guess you would say. So we're approaching a more sustainable level in terms of the resources and time we have available at this point. When we get above that mark, we tend to get stretched pretty thin. So we're not panicked about the trend at all. We're kind of welcoming it, to be honest with you. But we are going to work more and more over as time goes along here over the next few years to be more focused on on trying to get landowners involved in areas where we have target have targeted projects and BMPs per our grants. So try to be more intentional as time moves on. Soil health and cover crop, we continue with our strategic plan. We got reaching out to new producers and getting more interest in the program built up and that has continued. We got new cost share requests and we're beginning preparation for countywide aerial cover crop application, which is going to be happening soon. We already have a number of landowners and acreages lined up for that. I didn't put it on here, but in operation with the Pride Lake Spring Lake watershed district, we're trying to plan a couple of cover crop workshops then. They won't be until early next year, so hopefully.
Is it just since they're trying?
Clean water education program. So we hosted our native plant prairie that's basically trying to educate our landowners who are interested about the benefits of native prairie and how to do it. We had 21 attendees. That was a webinar. So it was a pretty good turnout. We developed materials for the winter salt reduction kit for homeowners and we distributed 400 of those kits at the Scott County Fair. So there's pretty good interest in that. We are continuing our plans to move forward with the outdoor education day. So we we meet, you know, a couple of times before the event happens, just to coordinate all the different various activities and details that have to be pulled off for that to go well. So far, we got indications from the teachers that we work with that they're looking forward to it. But we also are grounded in reality that things can change fast and we may or may not pull it off or we might have a partial event. We just don't know. We're going to have to remain pretty agile through this period and kind of see where at probably the week prior, we won't really know exactly how that's all going to go down. Inventory assessment. So we continue to work on the Roberts Creek sub watershed assessment. John is working on the final report. You have all the modeling finished. So it's just a matter of putting the narrative together and the charts and tables of where we want to what practices and where they go and what priorities we focus on. So that'll be wrapping up pretty soon. If you could scroll down a bit, Vanessa. I won't go into too much detail in the zoning support or livestock. We just continue to work and provide support to the county and to our landowners in those areas. Scooting down to buffer law, we're continuing. We do one third of the county each year. So every three years, we hit every every parcel that where the buffers required. So far, so good. We don't have any significant noncompliance or anything really to be concerned with or that we've seen. There are some areas where we don't have. We aren't able to see the buffers from the roadway or the right of way. We like to use aerial photography in those instances, but unfortunately, we don't have 2021 aerial photography. So we're going to push those off and postpone actual determinations for a percentage of those parcels into next year when we do have or not lighter, but recent aerial photography. Tree native plant sale, we don't have any activity on that to report. On the water quality, John conducted some biweekly sampling in Roberts Creek. Visited Eka Creek. We have some down logger out there that John loaded data for. And then we assisted Melissa with some lake bed surveys on McMahon and Cedar. The precipitation chart there shows what we actually received compared to the average rainfall at the Jordan Field Office. And it comes as no surprise. We can see the significant deficit of precipitation this year is borne out in the chart there or the graph. Construction erosion control, number of inspections remains high where we exceeded 250 mark, which we hadn't done for a long time. And plan reviews are just hovering there in the 20 to 30 range, which, you know, is all indication it's a strong market out there. Lot of happening on the permits and construction side is, as you all well know. Moving down to the wetland conservation act, just the volume of of projects listed there, you can see it's busy and usually that does correlate with with the buildings and the permits and everything else. We see a lot more delineations and proposed projects come in. So a significant number of new applications for wetland delineations and a couple of decisions were made as well on approving some applications. Moving down the Helena Wetland Bay, I'll just point out that we did receive back a report from our consultants on the bed survey. They mostly do a survey in spring to identify invasive species and then they come back in August or September, I think typically August and do the actual native plant survey. But anyway, the results of the invasive species or non-native species resulted in a map showing where we had infestations through the month of July and some mostly July, we went out and did some sprout spraying and mowing to knock back those non-native areas. We also did some spraying out across about 30 miles of township roadways, county and township roadways, excuse me, for wild parsnip. There's a lot out there. If you if you look for it, you'll see it. But we did a fairly decent job of getting most of the areas we were familiar with. So we're happy about that. And then I think I'll go down to the tables, Vanessa, and just kind of show the payments. There was about $47,660 in payments issued with projects within the WMO. Those were basically approved in July and then certified by our board at their August meeting. And then they approved, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six new applications for cost share and approved recommended approval for one of them, which will be later on your agenda. Total of all those new applications was a little over $28,400. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll try to answer any questions that are.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move on to Vanessa.
Thank you, Madam Chair Commissioners. Thank you, Troy. Um. We don't though have any approvals on the agenda today for any caution projects, just so you know. That might have skipped a month. But that being said, it's been another very busy month. It's it's great to see clearly, you know, making up for lost time is a good way to look at it. Overall, I know Melissa will talk about a lot of the things that she's working on. I have a little update on a lot of the work that Ryan's been doing. A lot of the work that he's been doing is a lot of reporting, closing out grants. It doesn't, you know, doesn't maybe look that glorious, but it is a critical component of the work that we do in order to receive the grants that we do. So I kind of always want to bring that forward to you once in a while, so you can kind of see what that that work looks like. Because it does accounts for a lot of the time. I know we see the dollars for the for the projects, but not necessarily what the cost is in staff time or effort. So he's working pretty solid on that. So there's a lot of really great things going on right now. As Troy mentioned, the tour for this fall is still on. We have clearance from the county. Obviously, there'll be more details on that, but mark your calendars again for October 11th. This year's focus based upon, you know, listening to everybody, the Commissioners, our residents, the county board and other boards is groundwater is kind of a bigger issue this year, and that's pretty consistent with the drought year. That groundwater tends to rise higher up. So it's a great year to do a groundwater tour. It'll have a lot of really interesting stops. It should be a really good one. We'll still do the wonderful presentation of the awards by the SWCD. There'll still be a boxed dinner. Much like last year, though, we will ask all of you to drive separately, please. And rent a bus. That is one of the hiccups with COVID. Consistent with county policies, masks are not required outdoors, but if one of our tour locations happens to be indoors or something like that, we may ask that you just wear them inside for that. And that's kind of about it, but it should be a great tour. Again, planned for October 11th, which means we will not have the October WPC meeting. Normally, we kind of try to overlap the tour on the WPC meeting date, but it just wouldn't work with the board's schedule as well. They're very, very busy. So that's something to look forward to. Been working hard on that. It's always fun working on that one. Oh, Melissa will be talking to a little bit about the results for Zoo Plankton Study, which is really interesting. And then we did get the draft performance review and assessment from the board and Water and Soil Resources. So I brought this up a while ago. The Bowser does do performance reviews for each agency. They try for every 10 years. In this case, we get double the fun because the WMO gets a review as well as the county. Obviously, you folks know they're kind of in many ways, a lot of the same. So there's very little difference between the two. So the amount of the county's PRAP was pretty limited. And and a lot of what the performance review for the county would have would occur is going to do is going to overlap with the WMOs. So in conjunction with the counties, they also do that CD at the same time. So we'll actually bring that to you next month. We're hoping to get Bowser to do a little presentation for us as they did for the SWCD. They obviously, they always do a SWCD, but it'd be nice to have them kind of do a little presentation for you guys as well. So I'm kind of trying to see if I can line that up as well. Overall, went well. They have a few recommendations. So nothing surprising. We did pretty good. Another couple of projects we're working on, Markley Lake, similar in many ways to McMahon, has issues with high water and concerns for property damage and flooding. You know, it's weird to talk about this year, but it is an ongoing issue with Markley. Markley does though have larger challenges in which it doesn't have a clean outlet or a simple, easily achievable outlet. So we're working in a partnership with the City of Prior Lake and City of Credit River to kind of do a study and analysis right now to determine what those options will be. So we're going to kind of hard on that and we'll get back to you on that coming up pretty soon. And then a couple of other just other things. Bowser Academy this year was going to be in person. They did just announce that that will be online due to the Delta variant. I'm not quite sure what that'll look like. They did reach out and ask if I would present on one of the panels for the academy this year. So if that presentation does move forward, I'll obviously let you folks know how that turns out. If any of the Commissioners, if any of you want to attend Bowser Academy, just let me know. We can also always sign you folks up to attend as well as staff if it's something you're really interested in. And just so just reach out to me and I can kind of send you the agenda and outlines and I just kind of what it is. It's a three day usually event, two and a half day event. It's a good training opportunity for staff. We tend to like to go at least every couple of years to kind of stay up to date on things. The only other interesting thing I have was that the council also reached out and asked if I would sit on their 2050 advisory committee for their next water plan. So I don't have many details beyond that. It's a good opportunity for us to try to bring at least our county's water resource issues and concerns of the WMO resource issues and concerns into my council's larger comprehensive planning. So that should always be fun. I do like working with the council. So I will bring you more information on that as well. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thanks, Vanessa. Do we have any questions for Vanessa? Okay, hearing none, we can move on to Melissa. Ongoing business.
I'm moving my notes over here. Okay, so I just have a few updates for you and then I'm going to share my screen for the zoeplankton results, but just an AIS update. I know last month I told you about, just to keep you aware of what's happening around us, that the Parlex Spring Lake watershed district did have a a new AIS found in Spring Lake, which was Eurasian water mill soil. I just got another email from the DNR and updated in infested waters list that Pike Lake has now been found to have zebra muzzles. So Pike Lake is also I think it's in Parlex Spring Lake watershed district. I don't, I didn't bring up the watershed jurisdiction layers, but it's downstream of the prior lakes. So it makes sense that it has the it's been found to have zebra muzzles because they probably migrated from Prior Lake into Pike Lake. So so that's just an update of what's going on around us for AIS. Watercraft inspections have been going well. The one thing I did see in their monthly report that they sent me is that there was one inspection on McMahon and two on O'Dowd where they had cases of plants that were stuck to the watercraft and not removable by hand. So the inspectors did refer those boaters to go get their boats cleaned or decontaminated. So there hasn't been much of that in the past two years that they've been doing inspections for us. So I'm going to show my screen here. Do you have to give me permission to share my screen, Vanessa, or?
It should be on. Let me look.
I don't see. Oh, here it is. Okay. Okay, if you could let me know when you can see that.
Yep, we can see it.
Yep, okay. Um, so if you remember last month, we got permission to have our engineering take a sample zoeplankton sample in Cedar Lake. They surprised us by actually taking two, but not only charging us for one. So they took a vertical toe sample and a horizontal toe sample. So the vertical is where they just lower a net down towards the bottom of the lake and then pull it back up and capture any zoeplankton in that netting. And then the horizontal toe is where they actually put this netting out behind the boat, drive for a certain distance and capture whatever is more kind of in the middle of the water column. So this is part of the report that they finished and had to us by August 2nd. You can see from the chart there that the sample was taken July 28th. And it, the results show that it contained all three groups of zoeplankton, which are clodocerins, copepods and rodifers. So the sample collected in late July reflects, really reflects the impact of fish predation on the zoeplankton community. Because fish generally select the largest what's termed as zoeplankters that they see and they prefer those clodocerins, which you see is a very little amount. They prefer those to like the copepods or the rodifers because copepods, I found out, can escape predation by fish. They're a little bit faster. They can jump out of the way and the clodocerins are these big bigger organisms and they swim really slowly. A good example is daphnia. If you've ever heard of daphnia. So the results showed that in this case, in July, that the rodifers dominated the Cedar Lake zoeplankton community. And rodifers are the least preferred food for fish. And that the copepods occurred in higher numbers than the clodocerins. The good thing is that no zebra muzzle villagers were found. I'll show you the other. This is the horizontal toe. Where there was a little bit more clodocerins found in that sample. So these large bodied clodocerins such as daphnia, like I mentioned, they can improve water clarity of a lake by consuming the algae when these are present in high numbers. So on July 28th, when I took the sample, the clear water conditions that we observed in Cedar during mid-May, which was down to almost 14 feet. This had been replaced by blue green algae. So now Cedar Lake is more dominated by blue green algae. The transparency isn't as good as it was in the spring. And blue green algae is, you know, it's a type of algae. There's other algae in the lake that the zoeplankton feed off of. Blue green is not their preferred algae. They consider it unpalatable is what I've read. So it's, so at this point, we think it's, it's not really possible to answer the question that we posed in mid-May whether the zoeplankton community grazing on algae had caused the clear water conditions that we observed in the lake. But but the presence, knowing that there's a presence of these large bodied clodocerins or daphnia that we found in July suggests that it is plausible that zoeplankton grazing could have caused the clear water conditions in mid, in mid-May, if there was the right number and size of daphnia present earlier in the spring. I'm gonna stop sharing that. So they suggested or recommended that we take the sample sooner, maybe next year if if we can, if we can budget for that, just to measure the number of those clodocerins in the lake and you know, if they're in higher numbers, then that could explain why we saw that clear water state early in the spring in Cedar. Is there any questions on that before I, I only have one other short thing to update you on, but is there any questions on that at the moment?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say I very much appreciate you walking us through what we're seeing and understanding the relationship with testing that they were doing and the different organisms they were finding. So very interesting. Thank you.
And I can, I can post this on our website under our reports, so that if you wanted to go in and read the whole thing, you can. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that we do have volunteer on McMahon Lake that regularly monitors the water levels and he sends me a copy of that when he sends that reading to the DNR and he's, the last reading he sent me was on the 15th of this month. And so that reading, so the water elevation is now at 965.09 feet. The ordinary high water level of McMahon is 965.2. So it's just a little over an inch below the OHW and that's the first time it's been that low that I know of since, I think. I wanted to say July of 2017. That's when we really enacted the high the no wake restriction on the lake, but it's been high even in the 2014. So so the lake has come down a lot. I do have a couple of pictures because I was out there last week. Just quickly share these also. So this is is that showing? Okay, so this is a picture from 2019. This is the access. You can't see the the concrete pad at all. And then here is last week on Thursday. So you can actually see the concrete pad now. And I did notice that the DNR was out there and actually filled in some of the holes with gravel, brought some extra gravel out. So it's a little bit less bumpy at the access. So that's all I have.
Yeah, this is the Commissioner Shay or just, you know, you know, I live on McMahon, but just even some of the issues that we were having on McMahon before or just some of the concerns we're having with septic tanks and septic fields or whatever that were closed. This drought has been a wonderful thing for this lake. There's nothing kind of close or anything else with that. It's all kind of drained back down or evaporated. I shouldn't say drained, but yeah, it is. Just with those pictures I should have shown there, it has been back to, I wouldn't say normal, but that's one, but the only good thing about this drought, but it has been, I remember last year in some of these meetings that why we could just really use a good old fashioned drought to help kind of get some of the stuff back with this lake. And that's exactly what's happened. And that's, you know, that's exactly what's worked. It's been it's been great for the for the shoreline anyways. I just want to kind of give a little information on that.
Any other questions or comments for Melissa? All right, thanks, Melissa. Okay, then I think we can move on to our new business, starting with Vanessa on the 2022 proposed levy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is that fun time of year when we get to start talking about budgets and levies again. So the reason why we bring the levy itself to you early is because the levy certification Is because the levy certification form is actually required under statute to be. Certified and. Turned in by September 30th. So in order to get to the WPC and then to board. We do have to start at least the levy portion a little bit earlier in the year. There are some tricky components with that, obviously, we don't, the county itself. Isn't exactly locked into what they're projecting for their levies, so you know, I, I reach out. To Danny and everybody and kind of talk about what are they projecting for the county, what are they hoping for? You know, what are their best estimates right now and where they think we're at overall countywide? Because the WMO in general, if at all achievable, wants to stay. Within the range of the county levy. If we can stay under it, that's always optimal, otherwise we want to stay at least somewhat close. Last year, we didn't quite achieve that, but last year was also a very unique year, and there are a lot of conversations to make sure that the county was going to be comfortable with that before we did. Understanding that, you know, there might be a couple of years where things are a little bit off. We may be a little bit off again this year, not necessarily to the extent that the county might go, but I think we're still comfortable that we are. Still within the range of what county is, the county is protecting for its own county levy. So with that being said. When we take a look at what we need for a levy request, it's really based upon. What's in our work plan, what are our current. Projects and programs, what are our existing commitments? So this year, a lot of our existing commitments are really what is driving the, the budget request for 2022. We don't have too much that's new, we have a lot of things that are just really getting underway now, and that's really the, the bulk of what's driving it. Because most of these are going to be activities where we have to front the money. Ourselves upfront, and then we get reimbursed at a later date through these grants, so. With that being said, the proposed or requested levy from staff for 2022. Some of those key factors that are influencing that, as I said. Again, overall revenue is a bit down compared with the past 10 years. So this year's revenue, and that's the, you know, levy in conjunction with. Our, our interest accounts, which are very small, obviously, mostly it's our other grants. Is probably going to be very similar to 2021, we don't expect it to be really much different. So that 3% is actually the minimum identified in our approved watershed management plan, table 5.6. So for those of you who like to read, it is in there, the plan actually includes a couple of different numbers, it includes. An increase for inflation, an increase to implement the plan. And then it also includes maybe an increase to adjust for the increasing costs of. Products and materials, so it's kind of three different parts that are kind of rolled down into two percentage numbers. I was aiming for just part of that this year, I'm kind of just trying to stick with. What will just adjust for the account of inflation and some of the product costs. So that's kind of where we arrived at that 3%. But it is in line with both the WMO policy and the county for levy changes. The proposed 2022, 2022, excuse me, levy is comparing to the 2021 levy of $1,290,913. And change is an increase of about $38,727, so it's really actually not that much overall. But it is an important amount. The decrease in revenue, as I mentioned, is a bit, is a bit down, but it does reflect a little bit of a new norm. Our grants are more stable, I'll keep saying this after years after years, our grants are more stable than they probably have been previously. Less competitive, we're not necessarily applying for grants against everybody else, some of them with multimillion dollar budgets to throw at a grant. But it does mean that the, they're usually smaller in, in grant awards. And you usually do have to put a little bit more upfront, so that's kind of the new norm. It's kind of a win lose, but you know, overall, it's generally a good thing. Because you have a little bit better understanding of what you're going to have to work with from year to year, rather than huge highs and lows with unknowing. That being said, we did obviously take on a couple of larger projects such as McMahon, which are unique and do require a rather substantial upfront cost, so. Again, the grants that we are anticipating. Are the same grants that we were awarded last year, so those, everybody should be familiar with, but are really getting underway right now. The key point in the three kind of big major grants, now we have some smaller grants, but these are the, the major bulk of our grant revenue. Right now, the 2020 to 2023 nine element plan grant, this is the EPA grant that came with the EPA fund. This one is again that $284,275, $284,275. Does come with a 40% match, so overall, the total grant with all the projects included and match comes to 505,600, so. There's that one, again, the McMahon project, which is again a much larger, that's 300,000. Overall, a $600,000 project, keeping in mind 200 of that, of that local match, 200,000 of that match. Comes from the county and then 100 of that match comes from the WMO. And then the 2021-22 Bowser Watershed Based Implementation Funding Grant. Again, the total, and that was actually 365,000, but the grant award is 310, so. Um, those are kind of the big grants that we're working on right now, now that being said, you know, we're working pretty hard on those and getting a lot of those in right now. But we won't necessarily receive that revenue until it's been encumbered, so there's always a good chance that that's going to follow in a future year. Costure demand, as Troy kind of talked about, it remains high, but not quite as high as it's been. And when we had those really, really high grants that we were pushing. It's high, but it's, it's a more sustainable level, which is nice. But that being said, while we continue to push towards having a dedicated baseline fund for the technical assistance costure program. So that we can continue to meet the needs and desire of our residents. And have a little bit more of a stable program without too many peaks and valleys as much as possible. It's always important to have a stable relationship with your residents, and that's what we're always, we're always aiming for. So again, just to kind of try to balance the budget with all these grants. A couple of things do take hits, one of them continues to be the education outreach budget. It will remain a little bit low again in 2022. It's again, it's just that unfortunate need to reduce some of our general levy expenses, because those need to be dedicated towards meeting our grant matches. And then, you know, maintain some of our other existing programs and service areas, but then still balance the budget. So for those of you who've been around for a while, you know that the WMO has contributed more and more funds to support. The Scott County Watershed Education Partnership, and we do strongly believe in this program, we believe it's critical. It has shown itself to be really effective in changing water use on the land, more than almost anything else. But that being said, as we continue to push and provide more, our other partners were doing less and less. And contributing less and less, and it, it has just become an unsustainable level. Once that large sand creek, $5 million grant ended. So that'd be, at the same time, we were successful at one of the 2020 watershed based. 2021 watershed based implementation funding grants of nearly $40,000 to help kind of offset. That dip in education a little bit. We do have several program areas that are pretty flat this year. In order to again, to keep the budget modest and not do anything besides meet our needs. Again, administration, monitoring, education, regulations, planning, coordination. Those are all staying relatively flat or up or down just ever so slightly. There is going to be an anticipated increase to inventory and assessment for 2022. This is because the county would like to improve its LIDAR. I know you guys know much about it, but LIDAR is hopefully flown every 10 years or so, ours was, geez, ours is over 10 years old. And that impacts a lot of things that are in our impacts, as Troy was saying. The ability to do a lot of like subwaterside assessments, a lot of the work that we do relies upon good LIDAR data. So it is time, the WMO benefits very directly from that. So we'd like to help contribute towards that project in order to make sure that the county is able to do that. So, and that's good, because we have a few larger studies that we hope to get accomplished in the next five years that would need that data, and we hate to do it without it, so. At the moment, I'm guessing, and I'll say guessing only just based upon the fact that I'm waiting for a few grants that are closing out to come in. It's a very well educated guess, and I'm pretty comfortable. But there's probably going to be a larger deficit in 2022, nothing we can't endure. Again, it's mostly to make sure that we have the upfront costs available to meet those grant needs. And then that grant funding will come in, in future years to balance it out. But it will require dipping into the fund balance, I didn't have a comfortable number yet, so I didn't want to bring that to you now in this. Request for the levy that has a little bit more to do directly with the SWM budget, so. Anyhow, hope everybody's still awake. That being said, that's kind of a brief summary as well of where we're kind of projecting the WMO's budget to go for 2022. That will lock in a little bit closer to November. As we have a little bit more settling of our grants, both what's closing out this year. And where we feel some of that encumbered revenue will come in either this year or next year, so. That being said. Staff is requesting. A recommendation from the WPC. To the board for the 2022 levy of $1,329,641.39. Or a 3% increase. Stand for any questions?
Vanessa, any questions for Vanessa?
Okay, this is Commissioner Pent, no questions, we can have a discussion after I make my motion, but I'd move to recommend to the WMO board. The approval of the stated. Amount of money in the levy, which equals about 3% increase for next year.
Do we have a second or any other comments or questions?
So I will second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioners, I'll do a roll, Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitts.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Verling.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner Bill.
Hi.
Just passed. Okay, then I think we can just move on, Vanessa, it looks like you're up again with the EPA final report.
Sorry, Madam Chair, Commissioner Penn, did you have any follow up thoughts or questions?
No, I just want to compliment staff for, again, for being as careful as they can to keep our levy requests at 3% or less each year, so I appreciate that very much, thank you.
This is Commissioner Phil, I will echo that Commissioner Penn, that great comment, and that's what I was thinking, it was a very thorough, very great description, thank you very much for this.
Well, thank you Commissioners, we do strive very hard to stay as lean as we can and still. Maintain good service and hit all of our goals, so. Appreciate it.
Okay, I think we can move on to the EPA final report.
Absolutely, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, so, hello, Ryan couldn't be here this, this month. I did want to bring you one of the projects that he's been working on, this takes up the bulk of his time. And he does this for all of the grants that he leads, Melissa does this too, so do I, although Melissa and Ryan do it more. This is a large part of their workload they probably don't ever see. But when we close out a grant, and in this case, this is another EPA grant, there is a lot of reporting you have to do. And it's also nice to know at the end, I think I always like to bring it to the Commission. What did we actually accomplish? We go off and we do these grants, we kind of think we're doing a great job, we, you know, we hope to meet all our targets, we talk to you about. What we, what we win and what we, you know, maybe don't quite achieve along the way, but it's nice to bring them back to you at the end to kind of show you. What we really did accomplish, and if we, if there was something that we missed, what that was and perhaps why, why that happened. So for those of you who were here at the time of the grant, this is a 2016 EPA grant. For those of you who weren't, this was a 2016 EPA grant. This was a little bit similar to their old section 319 impaired waters grant, so when a, a lake. Or water body doesn't meet its state water quality standards for its intended use. It's determined to be impaired, right, because it doesn't made it, made its water quality use. And there are special grants available through the EPA, they're called section 319, and I can't remember why. Darn it, I always go look that up again too, but. Because 319 seems like such an arbitrary title, but anyway. But they are section 319 grants. And then as well as, you know, other grants that we've done, obviously through the, the Bowser $2.2 million grant. On Sand Creek Targeted Watershed Project in addition to several other grants. But total additional state and local leveraged funds for this EPA funded grant actually exceeded 1 million in the end. Which obviously includes our match. So the overall purpose of this grant was to reduce TSS, which are the total suspended solids, so that's all the sediment. And phosphorus, which oftentimes is bound to that sediment. In the Mississippi and Minnesota rivers, and then help reduce some of that. In our Sand Creek watershed locally and its tributaries, because as you know, Sand Creek has many tributaries. Some of the issues that we have include aquatic life, because obviously the more sediment there is, the more difficult it is for. The aquatic life to breathe, which would be, in our case, very similar to. The forest fire smoke that we have endured this year. So that's kind of what the, the fish and the macroinvertebrates all endure when there's a lot of sediment in lakes and rivers. And then there's also, you know, Sand Creek and the Porter Creek aquatic life. Those targets are usually determined by what's called an IBI, which is an index of biological integrity. Which basically is a range that tells you what, what, what water quality parameters are necessary. And aquatic standards are necessary in order for different levels of aquatic life to survive. So in many of these resources, we tend to have a range. We have what I like to call the raccoons, the hard, true tested that can survive anywhere. Aquatic life, but then we have some that are a lot more susceptible to changes in water quality. So that's kind of what that IBI stands for, and our scores were not doing so well in these creeks. So these projects were designed to kind of help build some, repair some of that, and also build some resiliency, which is really important when we have all these. Extreme weather events which are kind of more our norm. So as you can kind of, I apologize, it is a little blurry. You can kind of see the, the 319 project areas here, so it's a rather large part of the WMO, and it's a rather large part of the county. So this grant will actually terminate at the end of the month. And the final report does need to be submitted to the MPCA, which does actually get also reviewed by the EPA after MPCA review. So, uh, Ryan is working really hard on that final report, making sure it all balances out both financially and with the goals and. BMPs we, we intended to install, so it's a rather large undertaking. It will be available for you folks to read once it's complete. It will be available for you folks to read once it's complete. If you would like to read it, but more importantly, just kind of wanted you to recall kind of what we were hoping to achieve with this grant and where we are and just kind of the bulk of work that occurs at the end of a grant. The nice thing is, by the end of this grant, all funds associated with this grant will be exhausted as well. We've had to do quite a few amendments, and then that often happens, and those are their own level of work as well. So sometimes you might propose to do, you know, a certain level of maybe near shore stabilization projects, but you don't quite get that many projects in. So you might put in a request to do more cover cup projects or something like that, something else that was in the larger plan. Every time you do that, you actually have to submit an amendment to make sure that it's approved, and you're not just going off on your own. So but it's worth the work, and we do end up doing it. So one of the things I did want to include, and I did ask Ryan to include in here, is just, this is kind of the, it's kind of called the work plan table. It lists the objectives here on the left, which are all of our goals that we intended to achieve. And you can see they're pretty substantial. But then also, you know, what were the the costs for those and not just what we projected, but what we actually spent. So I'm not going to go through it in detail. It's there for your review. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask about it. But it was a pretty heavy lift. I'm very, very proud of the WMO for the staff. Ryan has done excellent job with this. SWCD has done excellent job with this. Melissa, everybody has done excellent job with this as we tend to do for most of our grants. So again, I just kind of wanted to bring this back to you at the end to kind of show you in summary what happens once we start closing out one of those grants and what it requires for us to report and finalize. And where did we end up based upon where we started and what we hope to achieve? So I know Ryan would happily have presented this to you as well. But I did want to bring it to you this month because it is something that he's been working very hard on. So with that, I do stand for any questions?
Vanessa, is there, are there plans to do monitoring to see how the IBI scores change or anything, or is that all going to be done by the MPCA when they do their updates?
That is a really great question, Commissioner Weaver. I, well, PCA is going to continue to do their normal round of I of riverbed monitoring. However, it doesn't necessarily dovetail with following up on the effectiveness of these. So part of the reason why I wanted to step up our macroinvertebrate monitoring was to kind of start tracking some of these BMPs in stream. So we will be doing it in conjunction with MPCA. And actually, my counsel does a little bit as well. And then then kind of balancing the three. We don't want to duplicate work. But we do, I do feel we do need a little bit more. So
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Vanessa? All right, I think we can move on to our last item there. Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Vanessa, can you bring up the memo?
Happy.
So included in your packet was the request for proposals that Megan put together for the McMahon Outlet Engineering. So Megan is the lead staff person on the request for proposals. All I helped her with was helping her figure out what dates to have these check ins for the proposal, and then I helped distribute it. So we included the request for proposals in the packet, but if you have any you know, real technical questions regarding that, I'm going to have to, I would prefer to direct them to Megan, who's not on the meeting tonight, but so we published it last Tuesday. We are having a pre, I should say, not we, Megan and Vanessa are having a pre-proposal conference on Wednesday for any potential proposers to ask questions. We did set a date for specifically for questions so that Megan could get all the questions at once. And then she can have a little bit of time to answer those because Monday, September 6th was, is actually Labor Day. So we set that deadline for her to get responses back at questions for that Tuesday. And then the final deadline for any proposals for the outlet design is on September 17th. Now, the RFP does include design help with bidding the design out to an installation contractor and some construction supervision. So so we'll see, you know, what comes in. It is posted to our county bid site. It's posted to the Association of Minnesota Counties website. And we direct emailed it to several different engineering firms. So with that, I'll stand for any questions if anyone has any.
Thanks, Melissa. Any questions for Melissa? Okay, well, then it looks like we are all done for tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
This Commissioner Shea, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Verling, I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Verling.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners, very much for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks, everyone.
See everybody next month.
Thank you. Have a great.
Have a good night.